Legislative session. We will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward the Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmembers Zepone and Klitsky are absent.
Thank you. So we had a couple of adjustments on our agenda for tonight. Multiple-family housing property tax exemption has been deferred till April the 8th. And I think that's the only one. Under our new council rules, the agenda is not read, the consent agenda is not read. So Mr. Burr, what's our first public testimony?
Hold on one second. Let me get that list. First up to testify on the consent agenda is Terry Hill, then William Hewlings, then Justin Holler, then Dennis Flynn, and then Megra Flatman. Terry Hill?
Council President. While he's making his way down, I would just like to request we take number one separately from the rest.
Okay, we'll do Councilmember Cathcart. Welcome.
Good evening, Terry Hill, longtime Spokane resident. My intention initially was to comment on the housing situation that's been deferred, so I'll skip to the $300,000 settlement for yet another misbehaving SPD officer. I won't go into the details or the name of the officer involved. They've been well-publicized. He does have a family. $300,000 is a lot of money, and that's just a settlement. How much did the city pay on legal fees associated with this incident? This comes on the heels of an incident not too long ago where the city paid out $130,000 for an officer that wanted to get off work on time and T-boned somebody. We have a new police chief coming. There's a new search for a new police chief coming. He or she's got their work cut out for them. I thank all of you for your service to Spokane, and I yield the podium.
Thank you.
Next up is Will Hewlings, then Justin Holler, then Dennis Flynn.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown. I'm speaking on, I am expressing my extremely strong opposition to OPR 2024-0212, which proposes pre-purchase approval for four battery or electric vehicles, like a Ford Mach-E, Ford Lightning, and the Chevy Bolt or other cost-effective and usable electric vehicles not to exceed $200,000. So four vehicles, electric vehicles not to exceed 200,000? Like, why is it that public servants who work for the city need to be driving these expensive electric vehicles? I don't care what Jay Inslee or the Democrats, their logic. I find it utterly perplexing and concerning that there is an urgent push for the acquisition of unreliable electric vehicles, especially considering their unsuitability for colder climates. On Martin Luther King Jr. Day, when we had the parade, there was probably 30, 40 SPD officers blocking the streets. It was like five degrees. They're all sitting there idling in their gas-powered ice combust, internal combustion engines, and you didn't see no Teslas out there. You know why? Because they wouldn't have probably been, they wouldn't have lasted out there in that extreme cold. But the decision to invest taxpayer dollars into electric vehicles raises serious questions about the priorities of our public servants. Electric vehicles have been proven to perform poorly in colder climates due to the limitations of lithium batteries, leading to decreased range, reduced efficiency, and increased maintenance costs. Statistics show that electric vehicles experience significant challenges in colder temperatures. Do a little research. In Chicago, they were complaining because they couldn't charge their cars in the cold So I am in strong opposition. My statement's really long, so I'm going to send it to you. But I urge the city council to reconsider OPR 2024-0212 and explore alternate, alternative options that will better serve the needs of our community. And what I mean is maybe buying some gas-powered cars? Like, you know, I understand that it's cool to be cool to drive electric vehicles, but I'm not driving an electric vehicle, and you guys aren't. So why should someone that works for the city be driving electric vehicles? Thank you.
Next up is Justin Holler, and then Dennis Flynn, and then Megra Flatman. Justin, if you're online, can you hit star three? I don't see Justin online. We'll go to Dennis, and then Megra, and then back to Justin if he's around.
Hi, Council, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. On the consent agenda regarding OPR 2024-0212 on the four electric vehicles, just want to point out regarding EVs, they weigh typically 1,000 or more pounds than a similar gas-powered vehicle, so they use up more tires, which contributes to carbon. They cause more damage to people and property when in an accident, and they cost significantly more to repair. So if your concern is carbon, I also want you to consider that the increased carbon to make components of the car and battery calculate to about 100,000 miles, give or take, before there is any reduction in overall carbon. So I would say if you're really concerned about this, the incentive would be to purchase hybrids instead of EVs. While this was originally for the property taxes, this actually following applies to EVs as well. When government tries to uphold the rule of law so that there is equality of opportunity, human ingenuity and passion combine in a free-market capitalist system to produce output that elevates the common good. And for those of you who may have forgotten, this is called a principle. When government tries to tip the scales so that your chosen good rises to the top because you think you know better, even though you are no better than us, you pervert free-market capitalism into crony-capitalism. And for those of you who may have been, who may have forgotten, this is called carpetbagging and/or diktat. The mantra of "if just" is the cesspool of the unprincipled. If just one life is saved, then it's okay to trample on our rights and liberties. If just a certain mayor gets elected, it's okay to use my political office to unethically smear the previous mayor in the midst of a political campaign. If just more housing is made, it is okay to morally collect property taxes from all the single-family homeowners and give it to the developers. If just we buy EVs, maybe Florida and Manhattan won't be covered by Ocean. So if any of you have aspirations to continue and maybe even further political career, doesn't matter if you're red or blue, if you stand on principle, then your career will be built like a house on a rock foundation. But if you stand on carpetbagging and diktat, then it will be like a house built on sand. Thank you.
Next up is Megra, and then Justin Holler. Go ahead, Megra, you're unmuted.
Thanks. So Spokane Police Department is now the second most deadly police department per capita in the entire nation. And as we just heard previously, we're paying out lawsuits due to unchecked violence from the Spokane Police Department. This needs to stop. We need to have independent oversight. We need to have accountability, and we need to have these lawsuits stop being settled from the taxpayers. We need to have some sort of system where the police themselves are accountable. Consent agenda item number two, OPR 2018-0262, amendment number five, will spend another $50,000 on legal services regarding advisement and wastewater and, quote, "implementation of the NPDES permit." So the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permits, or the NPDES, is a really long name for describing the permits that dictate acceptable and unacceptable levels of pollutants in our water. The city is suing Washington State Department of Ecology with this law firm right here in the consent agenda, with the trial set for later in 2024 over these permits. The NPDES permits are supposed to be issued every five years, but the 2022 permits that are the subject of this lawsuit were first issued, haven't been issued since 2011 because of an extension that was granted in 2016. Spokane County's Environmental Services Administrator Rob Lindsay told the spokesman in 2022 that one concern was the timing of this slated permit, wanting it delayed further until after the EPA updated Washington's water quality standards again. Quote, "Applying for permits and updating them is time-consuming and expensive and ultimately costs county sewer customers," end quote. And that this lawsuit is, quote, "really the only opportunity that the county has to bring our concerns forward," end quote. Again, these concerns are suing over pollutants in our water. We shouldn't be having pollutants in our water. I'm not sure why this is a concern that the city is spending taxpayer money on. Spokane City Council's current agenda for March 25, 2024, on page 21 states that this work, quote, "will not impact racial blah blah blah, dot, 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 existing disparities." But pollution disproportionately affects the health of people of color and other groups like the homeless. A 2022 study from the University of Washington, for example, linked air pollution exposure, which disproportionately affects people of color, to redlining in Spokane. This lawsuit funding concerning permits with the same Craig, True Blood, KNL, Gates, LLP, absolutely does impact, Spokane's historically impacted, and this should not be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, Megra.
Justin?
Hello, I'm Justin Holler, District One. Regarding 2024-0213, the $845,000 for WASDOT cleanup, how about you let SPD do their job, and then there won't be as many camps? And furthermore, if you want the city to be clean, how about we fine the people who are making the mess and then let them work off the fine? And if they can't work off the fine by cleaning, then maybe they need jail rehab or take it out of town. Regarding Agenda 2024-0212, the $200,000 for electric cars, can we either have one type of electric plug instead of three different types of cars? That way, we don't have to reinvest in many different types of plugs. I'm not a big fan of just being beholden to one particular brand of car or vehicle, but if we could consolidate it to just one type of plug and save our, save the taxpayers' money. And furthermore, electric cars don't work in many circumstances. For instance, if a emergency services has to plug in their car at night when they take it home, if they, if it's not charged by the time they have an emergency call, then we're all fucked, and not in the fun way. Regarding 2024, oh, back to zero, the electric cars, how about we have hybrids for a while until we have longer-range electric cars or faster ways to charge electric cars? Or they become down in price. Regarding 2024-0028, traffic calming? I don't feel any calmer. When you have these green zones where little Johnny can open up their door on the right side and almost get careened by somebody or anybody, or accosted by homeless people, it doesn't seem to calm things down. The money you spend on green calming nonsense doesn't work at all. And furthermore, if you want things to be calm, how about you actually clear the roads of debris? Because I don't remember Howard being cleared, the last big snowfall, at all. At all. And that's not even a bike lane, per se. That's the whole entire street wasn't plowed. So maybe focus on cleaning the roads and taking care of the roads that exist, and maybe fix, I don't know, fix potholes, which would be inclusionary for everyone instead of the 2.5% of the population you're trying to appease to with the rainbow crosswalks that clearly didn't work because we spent $10,000 on it, and it's almost all gone now. And if you want to say that wear and tear on a rainbow crosswalk is a hate crime, then I don't know, it just seems goofy. As opposed to all the happy crimes? Like, they're happy crimes? I don't get it.
Thank you, Justin. Your time's up. That's it for public comment on our consent agenda. We will take one first. You want to go one first, Mr. Councilmember Cathcart? Okay, let's go. OPR 2024-2012, commentary before we vote?
Nope, no commentary.
Well, we are now voting on number one, the preapproval of electric vehicles. Want to do it by voice? Want to do it by voice? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. 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 Noes?
Nay.
Councilmember Navarrete?
I'm sorry, Councilmember. Aye.
Aye. Okay. Five ayes, two noes, that passes. Now, on the rest of the consent agenda, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? Consent agenda passes. Onto the legislative agenda, Ms. Fister.
Special Budget Ordinance C 36503, Amending Ordinance Number C 364627, passed by the City Council November 27, 2023, and entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2024, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2024, and Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage, and Declared an Emergency in Appropriating Funds in." Urban Forestry Fund, number one, increase revenue by $2 million. A of the increased revenue, $2 million, is provided by the United States Department of Agriculture and dispersed by the United States Forest Service as part of the United States Federal Government's Inflation Reduction Act. Number two, increase appropriation by $2 million. A of the increased appropriation, $2 million, is provided solely for contractual services procured to plant and maintain trees in economically disadvantaged areas of the city of Spokane. This action arises from the need to accept and budget for granting funding from the USDA to plant and maintain trees in economically disadvantaged areas of the city of Spokane.
Okay, we have two who want to comment on the urban forestry. That's Will Hewlings and Dennis Flynn.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown. I am, I just want to say I am thrilled to express my full support for Ordinance C 36503, which authorizes a $2 million no-match, fully reimbursable USDA federally funded grant aimed at planting and maintaining trees in economically disadvantaged areas of our cities, or city. This grant provides, provided by the USDA through, and I'm, excuse my wording, the Garbage Pathetic Inflation Reduction Act, presents an incredible opportunity to enhance our urban landscape and promote environmental sustainability. The significance of trees in our city's downtown core and surrounding neighborhoods cannot be overstated. Trees provide numerous benefits, including shade, improved air quality, and enhanced aesthetics. They also play a crucial role in mitigating the effects of urban heat islands and reducing carbon emissions, contributing to a healthier and more resilient community. As someone that lives downtown, I walk down the sidewalks and I just shake my head, all the dead trees. And I, and you know, it's just sad, you know, that, you know, first off, and you know, I went to school, I got a degree, went to school for this, but I noticed a lot of trees that are planted shouldn't be planted there. So you'll see the sidewalks buckling and, you know, but the other sad thing is the business owners are required to maintain these trees. I mean, it's already bad enough that a lot of these businesses are struggling, and then they have to have their employees maybe water and take care to maintain these trees. So hopefully, with this money that the city's going to receive, they can maintain the trees and, you know, make our downtown look nice again, you know, not all run down and with dead trees. But thank you.
Thank you, Will. Dennis Flynn?
Hi, Council, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Regarding the Urban Forestry Fund, at our neighborhood council meeting last week, we heard a presentation about Spokane canopy. And while I'm sure this would be more efficient to run these types of efforts privately, I mean, how much federal overhead do you think it took to send us $2 million of our own tax dollars back? Maybe two and a half million total? I support the goal of this program to drastically increase the tree canopy in our city. One observation I made to that presenter of Spokane canopy afterwards was that she incessantly inserted inequity and specifically invoked bigotry of people in color, people of color in her presentation as to why parts of Spokane have less treescape than other. Afterwards, I explained to her privately that whether true or not for other cities, this is a bald-faced falsehood about Spokane. So one, Spokane is still more than 80% white, and it was even more so decades ago. So any inequity, which I'm not saying there isn't any, but it's much more likely due to economic class than racism. And number two, I've traveled parts of Spokane for over five decades now, and I can tell you, northeast Spokane doesn't have less tree canopy solely or even mostly because of inequity, but rather because it was a grassy plain, for goodness sakes. So good grief, are we so co-opted that we have to inject racism into something where it obviously isn't, such as the tree canopy in parts of our city? What was especially nice to hear during the presentation was the presenter's admission, whether she knew what it meant or not, that the temperatures in Spokane have increased as we have displaced more natural ground with more asphalt and concrete. I'd be remiss not to take this opportunity to inform you that if you were to actually do your own research, you would see that of the temperature stations in rural areas versus cities, they show drastically less temperature change, in most cases to the point of statistical irrelevance, than temperature stations in cities and at airports where much land is now covered with asphalt and concrete. So similar to the lies that led to drastic, deleterious, and unnecessary impacts to children who were at 0% risk in our lockdown response to COVID are the lies we are being force-fed about the rising temperatures. Of course, they're rising in the cities. Another question I had is why aren't we only targeting the areas of town that need the trees the most instead of targeting every neighborhood council? One of the reasons explained is that there's a lack of civic participation, participation and engagement by those in those areas where the need is most. So if you know of any activists who actually want to do something productive instead of just help the moon, perhaps you could suggest engaging those communities most in need. Tree canopy would be a concrete way to actually combat inequity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, so as the park board liaison, I'm excited to get some more trees going around the city, in District One in particular, where Councilmember Cathcart and I represent. I live in the neighborhood that has the least tree canopy and the least parks in the city, so looking forward to getting some up there. And actually, $2 million that's on this is just spending authority. We got a total of $6 million as a city for tree canopy, and the lands council got another $6 million. And so in partnership, that'll be $12 million going towards both tree planting partnerships with some, and it does include maintenance. I heard, I think it was Will, mention maintenance for the current trees that we have. And this money's going to help us to do all that over the next five years, and there will be programs coming. So if you are wanting a tree on your property, or you're wanting, you know, some good city right-of-way where there would be some good trees, why don't you go ahead and send me an email, and I'll make sure that I get it off to the people who can make those decisions? So I'm looking forward to supporting this tonight.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, no, I'm really, really happy to support this. And of course, as we've heard, we definitely have some issues downtown with trees that have died and a lack of accountability in terms of who's supposed to take care of them, whether it's the city or the adjacent business owner. A lot of complications even with, you know, where the irrigation lines are and who controls or owns them. There's just so many issues. And of course, in northeast Spokane, we definitely have a lack of trees. And regardless of the reason, you know, improving that canopy is a big boost. And so I do strongly support that. And I remember a presentation that I saw back in, might have been 2018 or 19 now, and it was a partnership between the lands council and something that Larry Stone was doing at the time with ponderosa pines. And I just still remember this comment of, you know, basically, you go to the west side, and as you drive, you know, through Mercer Island, you look around at the greenery and the trees, and you just feel the wealth, right? You just feel it. It's a different sense than where you just came from. And so I think to be able to bolster our tree canopy in northeast also creates that same opportunity to feel like we have a much wealthier area, even if we continue to have challenges, which we're trying to overcome. But it's important that people can feel that positivity. And so I'm really supportive of this for that reason, and look forward to seeing those trees get in the ground.
Councilmember Bingle?
Sorry, one thing I forgot to mention, you stole my ponderosa pine thunder, but Spokane has an official tree, and it's the ponderosa pine, just in case you didn't know. Fun fact.
Any other council commentary? I agree. Law that is homeownership or places where they have high rentals, where people don't stay to maintain the trees. So part of this funding will go to that, so I'm absolutely supportive. And looking for a shade tree in the summertime. Prepare to vote. Councilmember Navarrete?
Aye.
Are you a yes?
Aye.
Great, 7-0. Thank you. Next?
Resolution 2024-28 regarding the approval of year 2025 traffic calming applications and projects to be paid through the Traffic Calming Measures Fund, deferred from March 18, 2024 Agenda during the March 11, 2024, 3:30 PM briefing session.
We have several members in the public. Mr. Eric Low, then Jacob Kane, Sherri Barnett.
Good evening. My name is Eric Low, and I'm a stay-at-home dad residing in Spokane Valley. I am in favor of all the projects listed for approval tonight. What I am not in favor of, what many people here are not in favor of, is the myopic approach this body has taken toward this body has taken toward traffic calming. Traffic, Spokane's traffic calming funds primarily come from speed and red light cameras. As a result, this city relies on dangerous driving to fund safety improvements. We are quite literally rolling the dice that with every ticket the city issues, there won't be a corresponding death. As traffic deaths rise year after year, I don't believe this strategy is working out. All the more baffling, despite regular calls from every neighborhood council and the community Assembly as a whole for a greater emphasis on safe streets, the pot of money seems to shrink daily. You have the opportunity to galvanize the city behind comprehensive, citywide, safe streets, providing an immediate public safety benefit to every constituent. But this council continues to pit neighborhood priorities against each other for peanuts. Peanuts made all the more sparse by this council's unanimous decision last year to move millions of these funds to pay for a traffic enforcement unit for Spokane police. I've already discussed at length the inefficiency of reactive measures such as police and fire responses to traffic violence. Millions in dollars, millions of dollars in wasted wages responded, responding to thousands of preventable collisions every single year. As illustrated by the woefully insufficient information you received in the recent briefing regarding the traffic enforcement unit, Spokane Police, Spokane PD is either uninterested or incapable of collecting and properly utilizing the data they need to do the jobs effectively. It's difficult to get regular drivers to drive safely when police also drive dangerously, like the police car I caught speeding through the Hilliard Commercial District on Friday. Spokane Fire might have a better understanding of the intricacies of data collection and analysis, but like police, they have little to no positive impact on preventing traffic violence. The pictures I provided you last week of a fire engine needlessly obstructing the Riverside Bike Lane illustrate this point. Address the structural cause of not only an immense amount of pain, suffering, and death in our city, but also our city's $50 million budget deficit. Any public safety levy must primarily be safe streets. We must fix the underlying problem or we will be back in the same exact position in another 10 years with more cars. Rebuild our streets for our use, all users. Let people move about our city safely and efficiently. Stop throwing money at the black hole of reactionary responses and allow Spokane citizens to make the infrastructure investments necessary to reach Vision Zero once and for all. Thank you.
Jacob Kane?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Jacob Kane and I live in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood. I support these traffic calming measures. It seems like all I hear when I attend the meeting in Lincoln Heights, which at least three of you have attended, uh, is traffic calming, speeding, and street racing. Residents are legitimately concerned that their kids and grandkids are going to be mowed down by a reckless driver and their fears are completely justified. It is exceedingly dangerous to be a pedestrian in Spokane. I can't open my Twitter app without hearing about a vehicle versus pedestrian incident within council jurisdiction, all three districts. There was one today at Sixth and Maple. And the vehicle always wins. I also support finding a way to bring the money back to traffic calming that the police got for traffic enforcement. We need traffic enforcement, but a department with a budget so large shouldn't have to take from a pot of money that's a top priority for every neighborhood council. Part of the reason they have to do this is the inordinate amount of time the police spend responding to traffic incidents, which is why pedestrian enhancements, protected bike lanes, and traffic education must be prioritized in any public safety levy over just primarily police funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Sherri Barnett?
President Wilkerson and all members of the city council, I am not at all, uh, very knowledgeable on this subject. I'm just going by the area that I live in. I live on the north side by North Central. They have worked on Howard. They took Howard down from five lanes to three. And, um, they did make a bike lane, which gets used a lot in the summertime. But they also did this with Monroe, from five lanes to three. And when the people tried to speak about it, we were told, "You're here to hear what's going to happen, not to make any changes or to request changes." Post-street also. All these streets that go through the river are very important and cutting them down, it has not helped on Monroe. I can tell you, it's dangerous for pedestrians there. There aren't enough stoplights and when the traffic is heavy, it's really, really heavy and non-stop. I'm not totally against it, but I really think the strength of those, those north-south ones that go through the river are very important, particularly if there's a problem and they need to be accessed. You're going to make a big mess in Spokane if you cannot get across the river. And I do think that it would be good to publicize it for more people to be able to give input when these things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Sarah Rose and then Justin Haller.
Hello, I'm Sarah Rose from Spokane. I am glad these projects are finally being allocated for and put into action. However, I hope in the future we can find ways to make changes faster, even if it means using temporary infrastructure while we wait for final plans and funds to come through. People's lives are on the line and immediate action is needed in all neighborhoods. The people of Spokane want to see changes before someone they love is another life lost due to negligent design, of which the city of Spokane is responsible. The eight projects scheduled for 2025 are a great start to improving safety on our streets. However, updating the design standards of all of our streets from the outdated irresponsible criteria set out by poor planners during the automotive boom should be happening alongside individual neighborhood projects. It's difficult to feel like one cohesive city when districts are fighting for money to fund their specific projects and part of the pot is going towards an ineffective police traffic unit, which contributes to our dangerous and deadly roads. Temporary infrastructure saves lives. Please don't wait any longer to implement changes across all of Spokane, which everyone can experience the benefits from. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Just say how you rate it. Justin Haller, District 1 still. The other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, how many overdoses are we, were we going to have before you guys offer real treatment? Um, there's something called Ricky's Law, you might want to look into that.
So, so Justin, we're not there yet, but it's coming up. We can put you, sign up, sign you up for that.
Okay, what are we on now?
We are on traffic calming applications.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I, I spoke to that already, but, but to further go into traffic calming, um, I'd like to see the bike lanes cleared of debris during the rest of the year instead of just, uh, every so often. And I understand that you allocated $900,000 towards, uh, clearing the debris. I don't know if that's just for winter or year-round, but ash is, is filled with debris, so is Crestline, so is Illinois. Many bike lanes that are main thoroughfares for cyclists are filled with debris and that should have been included in the so-called traffic calming because there are several people that are sabotaging several areas. In fact, there, there are still bottles broken on the Hamilton Street Bridge. That is a, a huge, uh, time savings for many cyclists. And if you could include cyclists into your so-called traffic calming, that would be great versus rainbow crosswalks, which only help 2.5% of the population. Maybe help out 100% of the population by fixing potholes. That would be inclusionary instead of just helping the left-handed, redheaded Pisces.
Thank, thank you, Justin. That's it. All right, that's the end of, uh, public comment. Councilmembers? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, uh, first off, I just, big shout-out and thank you to Abby Martin from council office for all of her work and helping put this together. And thanks councilmembers Sapon and Dillon, uh, who also serve on the, the traffic calming committee. Um, I'm really excited about the, the projects we're getting done in northeast, uh, project in Hilliard and in Minnehaha. Uh, it's really, really important. Obviously, we would love to do a heck of a lot more. We've been trying to do a lot more, we've been trying to expand our capacity and limited resources, limited, uh, staff. There's just a whole lot of limitations that we're dealing with right now. Um, I mean, but if folks have, you know, designs on some huge buckets of money that we could get access to, we would love to do a heck of a lot more, citywide, every neighborhood. Uh, that would absolutely be my goal. Uh, but for the time being, we, we do have limits and, and so we are, you know, challenged with making the best decisions we can. And we try to look at data, look at the historical investments that have been made, uh, look at, you know, the whole city and try to make the best choices that we can. And so we are limited, but we are doing the best we can. And if folks have some better ideas as to how we can approach it, I'm certainly all ears.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you so much, Councilmember Cathcart. It's been an honor to serve with you on the, um, traffic calming committee as well as councilmembers Sapon and, um, I don't know if we, I think we might've emailed some of the images or had them available. Folks wanted to look at any of the projects, had questions, happy to bring that up. But I'm really excited about the projects in District 2. I really see these as, uh, great investments, especially around, um, you know, it's terrible today, hear about the, um, accident on Sixth. Um, part of the, one of these specific projects will help, uh, address visibility striping. And when I do think of that project, I really see that as a focal point, as an entryway to three other neighborhoods with Cliff Cannon, Manitow, and Comstock, um, as well as the Flashing Beacon on 13th and Grand. That'll help also serve Rockwood. And then we also have Sumner, which is, uh, you know, I take every day, that's a way that folks get into, uh, East Central. Um, and it's also near, uh, the, um, hospital. Um, so I see just tremendous benefit to this. Um, just some of the comments too about kind of a more comprehensive look. I was really proud to work with Councilmember Kletzky on our complete streets ordinance and I think that it is something that we should revise and really look at to make sure that we are considering transportation, uh, for all users. And we have seen a lot of, um, potential benefit for more, uh, funding. And then for some of the neighborhoods that weren't picked this round, there's definitely some other, uh, funding mechanisms. We had a, uh, presentation last Monday and, uh, I believe it was Urban Experience, uh, about the, uh, bike bed, safer routes to school funding. And there's some really exciting projects for that too, that kind of helped inform how these projects were prioritized. And one of them is in, uh, Lincoln Heights on 29th Avenue, which is in desperate need of some traffic calming. I will just say, and sorry for the dad joke in advance for those keeping score, I really wish we could do something about the turkeys, uh, in South Hill to help traffic calm some of those crossings, but, um, I hope we can get there.
I've been late and it's because of the turkeys. Councilmember Bingo and now go to Councilmember Sapon.
Yeah, I don't know if this turkey knew what it was doing, but I once watched a turkey as a crosswalk and I was very impressed. I thought it was an accident, but then it turned the corner and did it again. And so I thought, I know what it's doing, but, um, it was. Anyway, um, no, I, uh, I'm excited for these two. Uh, you know, I always like to see the traffic calming measures, uh, coming together and starting to get built. I think they're going to be great. Uh, shout-out to Abby. Um, thank you to Dan Bowler and Rich, as well from our engineering department, who are helping us with a separate, um, uh, traffic calming, uh, issue. But, uh, I just want to reiterate that, uh, you know, the money that we took from traffic calming to spend, uh, towards establishing a traffic unit in the police, uh, department is actually the thing I hear most about when I talk to people about traffic calming, when they ask, you know, what are the things that you would like to see when it comes to traffic calming? Uh, the thing I hear most about is people speeding, not any one project, not any one thing that needs to be constructed, but about the people who are speeding and what do we do about the people who are speeding? And, uh, so I know that we will probably continue to use money from traffic calming for a, um, uh, for a police, uh, traffic unit. That number will get smaller and smaller until, uh, we no longer need it. But, uh, again, I will continue to support that effort, uh, because the thing I hear most about when it comes to traffic calming is speeding.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for working on this. Abby in our office, but, uh, citywide, took a lot of effort, a lot of meetings very quickly to get this out the door. And it was changing very rapidly on us this spring as the state legislature was making changes to, uh, state laws around this. I think this is an amount that we were hoping we could do more this year, but, uh, the factors from the legislature made it that we had to do a little smaller package. Uh, we've been having a lot of conversations with the administration and staff about how do we build more, uh, interventions across the city quicker? And we have a path forward on that. It's been actually over a year of me advocating for that. And so I think it's exciting to have a path forward to get more projects built in our community on a quicker timeline. So I'm excited for that going forward too.
Well, as council president, I'm excited for all the projects, citywide, District 1, 2, and 3. Uh, I think it's a great start. Shout-out to the council members who collaborated on this because really, um, there was a couple days I'm thinking, we're not going to get there because we were all advocating for various districts and what needs to happen. So, uh, prepare to vote. Councilmember Navarate, what's your vote?
Aye.
Did I clear you too fast? I think it was 7-0.
Got it.
All right.
Resolution 2024-29 regarding applications to amend the city's comprehensive plan and setting the annual comprehensive plan work program for 2024.
Welcome, Ms. Reba.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. It's good to see you again. Uh, tonight I'm bringing to you the resolution to set the docket for this year's comprehensive plan amendments. Um, I'd like to very briefly just kind of go through what, where we stand on all of the applications. Um, I have a very, very brief update on one of them and then, uh, I will get out of your way. So, um, let's see, is it going to work today?
Go ahead and try it now. It's the down button.
Hey, look at that. So as, uh, many of you recall from previous years, this is a multi, uh, multi-step process. We're just at stage three. The docketing committee has met, made their recommendation. Uh, you have all discussed and, and received briefings on these applications. And tonight is setting the work program, but there is a ton of work to do. Um, I, in fact, I'm here tonight with Brandon Whitmarsh and Casey Downey from my office. They will be working on some of these as well as we move forward. Um, we do, of course, once we have the work program set, we'll be going out for agency comment. We have a long public comment period with some workshops. So there's plenty of time for folks to engage. Um, you, you gave me a, a pulpit, I'm going to start advertising. I would love to hear from folks that they're, that are interested in these projects. So there is more time on these. This is not the final step. This stage, the docketing stage, or the threshold determination stage, has certain criteria that we ask, that the municipal code asks that you consider. You'll notice none of these says, is this a good idea or is this, should this be approved? It's more about are these legal? Are they com-plan amendments? Are they sufficient for what we, what this program is meant for? Um, and we've discussed this before with you, but it seems that all of these meet these criteria. And all of our applications this year are amendments to the land use plan map with attendant rezones. So, uh, these are the most common comprehensive plan amendments, but we're talking essentially a rezone, but it does require a change to the comprehensive plan as well. So, oh, I went too fast. If you are looking to reference what we, what might change with these proposals, it's all in Chapter 3, Land Use. And of course, we'll be looking at the entire comprehensive plan as well. So we have six proposals this year. Uh, they are somewhat spread out. We've got, uh, one in Chief Gary Park, a suite of them in West Hills, two of which are immediately adjacent to each other. So that's going to be fun for, to keep, keep straight in my head. Uh, and then of course, we've got one up on Balboa South Indian Trail and then the city-sponsored, uh, implementation of the South Logan TOD study recommendations. And that one's, one of the larger ones, but it's, uh, you can see them on this map. Very quickly, uh, the first one here is in Chief Gary Park. This concerns a mini-center, uh, the Family Promise Properties there next to the mini-center and just adjusting that mini-center to, uh, to meet their future goals and then as well as possibly the city's. Um, there is a slight expansion proposed for this one, which is just one property there on the block. The next one, oop, I'm sorry, I left my animations in and I'm trying to go fast. The next one is on, uh, 8th Avenue. This is right by the government way, Sunset Mini Center. Um, if you look at the zoning on this, it's a patchwork quilt. So the proposal from the applicant would, would, uh, make some of that conform with each, with each other. We'd have less, it's not good to have one property of one zoning next to another and then another and then another. It gets weird. Um, this one does have a recommended expansion area. Originally, uh, the docketing committee had a smaller area in mind, but the applicant has asked that you consider this larger area. This entire east area is This entire east area is all right-of-way. It is not private property. The west houses there that you see that are also suggested for expansion are private property. Next one, we have two right next to each other here on Sunset, this is kind of just when you get off at Garden Springs and go north, this is where you hit Sunset, it's on the north side of Sunset Highway. The first one is the yellow one, it's a couple properties, they're currently vacant, doesn't quite look like it on the aerial, but they are vacant, and the applicant's hoping to do some commercial zoning here, but they're, they've stated their intent is multifamily, they're just looking for more flexibility in the zoning. And the next application is the red parcels that you see, and I apologize, they're a little dim tonight, the parcels, not the proposal. The applicant's requesting the same thing, which is commercial zoning, but an intent to do future multifamily. So those are right next to each other. The, the second one, this red one here, to try to avoid keeping, leaving some parcels of single-family zoning or R1 zoning, kind of isolated, surrounded by higher intensity zoning, the recommendation from the docketing committee was to include this hashed area that you see, which is two complete parcels, and a little strip of the adjacent parcel, it's about 20 feet wide. The last of the private proposals that came from the application period last year is here on Indian Trail, this is in Bemis, South Indian Trail neighborhood, it's around the Excelsior Wellness Center and their associated properties. They have some master planning that's going on here, so it's a range of zonings and land uses that's in your packet if you're curious. The docketing committee did have some recommendations to protect some open space elements, and also to potentially allow us to avoid a sawtooth kind of shape next to a major arterial. They recommended these two additional application, or additional expansion areas. Just a side note on these, today I made sure that you had copies of the two letters, one is from one of the houses on the north, north section, and also another letter from the Homeowners Association, which is the eastern piece that you see hashed, both in opposition. They would like to not be included, so that is, that is in your packets as well. Lastly, we have the city's implementation of the South Logan TOD study that was adopted earlier this year by your good selves. This would implement the land use and zoning recommendations that are in that study. The remaining recommendations of that study are coming forward separately, they're not, those don't require the comprehensive plan to be amended. We folded this into the docket this year to make it clean and clear what everyone's working on. And that is the six applications that we have for you. Yes, sir.
And you didn't mention it, but that first one is also city-sponsored, correct?
The proposal, yes, is to, is to convert that one to city-sponsored, from a private application, which essentially means that the planning department would do all the processing and writing of their CIPA checklist and all that, but the city would be on task if a traffic study was required, and also for the signs and the mailings that would have to happen. And I believe, yes, on the east, on the rightmost column is our, our gross estimate of what those costs might be, unless there's a traffic study or some other technical study, that would blow that out of the water.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We do have several public comments. First is Dwight Hume, and then Clifton, and then Joe Ader. Welcome.
Dwight Hume, I'm here representing two different applications, one being Excelsior, and the other one just prior to that, out on Assembly and Sunset. And I have no comments on those unless you had questions of me. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Clifton?
Hi, I had a, my name's Clifton Trimble, I'm with StorHog Engineering, I'm here to comment on 477-476. I had a PowerPoint, I don't know if that's available.
It isn't for testimony.
It is not.
Not for public testimony.
Or I can just speak on it if it's inconvenient.
Go ahead and speak.
Okay. So for the project that is on 8th and Lindiki, which was the one that Kevin had mentioned, was this proposed city expansion, the applicant would incur the cost of the signage, et cetera, that had started out with, essentially, that area is surrounded by, if you turn left off of Sunset Boulevard, there's a gas station, there's a motel, and it's sandwiched between Sunset Boulevard and 90, so it just, really, to, for continuity, would, we feel that it would just serve the applicant and the city to rezone that to all community business. So we would just hope that you consider that and can move forward in the process and kind of drill down on more of those details at more appropriate time. The other project that I'm here to speak on is the project off of Sunset and Russell, I believe that one's 477. So that's right near the Sunset Boulevard, which is obviously a major arterial and corridor. Once you move right across Laetah Creek, it's all commercial. So essentially where that transportation would support, commercial area, we ask that that be considered, and we'd like to discuss that further. So we support us and the applicant, 477-476, and would hope that you consider both those further, and we'd love to move forward in the process. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Joe Ader.
All right, City Council, thank you so much for having me, I'm Joe Ader, I'm a resident here, business owner, as well as a nonprofit director, and so appreciate you considering our comp plan adjustment for our properties on Mission and on Sinto. The intent of that is to keep it residential, but the office zoning would allow us to do office as well as childcare onsite, which is a major need in our community and for our particular population that we serve there, as well as be able to increase density of residential right next to the bus stop in the new city center line, which matches, matches the master plan. So, thank you so much for considering that.
Thank you, Joe. Council Commenter? Councilmember Bingo?
That's right. Well, I am very excited about a number of these, but particularly the, with the TOD study in Logan, and, and the changes that'll be, that'll be happening there. I think that we're just really at a crossroads as a city where we have to determine, are we going to transition into be, into being a city, or are we going to continue to be sort of a sleepy, small town? And one of the things that I, I realize is that, so long as the Growth Management Act exists, and we have so limited space to expand outward, we have to expand upward. And so I think the Logan area change will be a good proving ground for the rest of the city. Logan is prime for that, that sort of development in that area, right in the university, and, and I'm excited to see what happens in that district, so, looking forward to it.
You have a commentary? Prepare to vote. Councilmember Navarate, what is your vote?
Aye.
Aye. 7-0, thank you very much.
Resolution 2024-30, approving settlement of Tatiana Presnell, $300,000.
There is no public testimony on that? Council Commenter, prepare to vote. Councilmember Navarate, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-31, adopting a plan to address the fentanyl and opiate overdose crisis in the city of Spokane, and declaring that exigent circumstances exist that demand coordination of resources available between the city of Spokane and the state of Washington in partnership with community organizations.
We have a number of public members who want to testify. We will start with Terry Hill, then Luis Manriquez, and Union Carter.
Never did I imagine that I would stand here and publicly say that I agree with Will Huilings on something, but he's been sounding the alarm on the fentanyl issue for quite some time. That issue's not going away, it's getting worse. 31 overdoses so far this year. 31 lives lost. I support your resolution tonight, I don't see it as any type of solution, I see it as a baby step forward on a very long journey. Any, Spokane is not alone in this fight. Any funds that would be released by the governor declaring an emergency would be very competitive, and Spokane needs to get their snout in the trough, make sure we get our share. Additionally, we need to be looking at our congressional delegation. We need federal dollars. This, this is a long battle, it's going to be very expensive, and we need all the help we can get. Currently, there are fentanyl scanning devices sitting in warehouses, shovel-ready, and Congress has failed to allocate the funds to release them. I heartily suggest that the city council use their clout in speaking with the delegation, with our congressional delegation, who is currently on Easter break until April 9th, but we need, we need them to get off their butts and get working, too. This is a major problem, and it's going to require all hands on deck. I thank all of you for your services, Spokane, and I yield the podium.
Thank you, Terry. Luis?
Thank you, council members. So I want to commend you on this effort to recognize the severity of the fentanyl crisis and put some pressure on the governor to recognize it as well. I think it's, it's a, as a, as a frontline worker, it's an ongoing issue that's grossly underreported, and I think any effort to get better data is going to help us recognize both the severity and take appropriate action on this issue. I did want to point out that in the agenda, the amendment is, is not complete, and so it starts by saying Ricky's Law, you can, you know, use, use of Narcan to do, and it just says, and, and there's nothing on. So the actual impact of that decision is unclear, so I can't comment on it, but I do want to say that we need to be careful and take seriously whenever we remove someone's liberty. I don't know if that amendment, how far it goes in that, but I think it's important for the council to make sure that's available for public review and comment. One other thing I would say is that I would encourage you all to go forward, to go further in using harm reduction practices that are evidence-based, including supervised use facilities. Though they are novel and controversial in the United States, they've been in practice around the world for decades and have a strong body of evidence behind them, and supervised use facilities are known to save lives and increase engagement in treatment, and so I hope that the city council and the, and the mayor will take up that option as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Union Carter? Is she online?
Union, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect, sorry, I definitely signed up to testify in person, then came on the phone, so thank you for sharing with me. Hi, my name is Union, I'm a community member, I live over in Hilliard, and I just wanted to recommend that you all find this resolution or pass this resolution. I have a lot of appreciation for the people in Experience Matters who center on that petition, for a lot of us to sign, to help get this fentanyl crisis recognized, and hopefully getting some money and some resources behind it. Just a couple weeks ago, probably across the street from city council in the parking lot right behind Advocare, I saw somebody almost die of an overdose, and luckily, the parrot department got there very, very quickly, and was able to, like, resuscitate the person and everything, but there's a lot of times where the EMTs don't get there, or aren't called at all, and similar to the person who just testified right before me, the body, the death count of fentanyl is unknown, really, because there's such a lack of data around it, and fentanyl is destroying lives in our community, and this isn't the only community that fentanyl is taking over, all types of places in Washington, even, including on the west side. I mean, it's hitting particularly our homeless population really, really hard, people who don't have clear access to resources and stuff, and I think that this resolution and declaring a public health crisis is one step closer to getting, like, wraparound care that other community members need, but particularly our homeless community members need desperately. It also allows for better resource flow and coordination between city, county, and state, because sometimes that can be barrier yourself in getting, getting people resources, and better public indication about the true dangers of fentanyl. If we pretend like this isn't a crisis, it'll only get worse, and we'll only see the death count rise higher in health, so just urging you to pass this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Pappas, then Brandon Redman.
Hello, council members, my name is Michelle Pappas, and I'm a resident of Spokane and a member of Experience Matters. I'm here to ask you today to vote in favor of this resolution. You already know about how the fentanyl crisis is decimating our communities. We live in a world where I carry Narcan on me, because I know that this is affecting everyone, from kids in our communities to our grandparents. We need more reported data to address this crisis. We also want to uplift that behavioral health programs have been proven effective with proper medication, and that increasing the funding would better assist the community. We also need to rapidly reassess the response to this crisis. This addiction will not solve itself, and we need cooperation between jurisdictions. The more we know, the better we can help everyone in our community and work to provide resources for our neighbors. I ask that you pass this resolution, and thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Brandon Redman, in person, online.
Hello, Spokane City Council members, my name is Brandon Redman, but you can simply refer to me as a fellow addict, a fellow recovering addict, and a concerned member of the community. I ask you now to consider Resolution Number 2024-0031. Let me explain this as a fellow addict. There is no decision that is a surefire way to solve the fentanyl crisis. That being said, this resolution allows for a host of things to happen that can help. First, a public emergency allows officials to dedicate resources in combating the crisis. A problem that we see here in Spokane, and is sorely lacking that we see in Spokane, you need only walk down a street sidewalk to see the trash strewn across the street, the plethora of transient individuals under blankets while standing outside doing god knows what substances, and the many individuals that live in the insanity of what the fentanyl crisis is today. Second, it allows the spread of crucial information to the community through public education campaigns. Simply put, if you don't understand the fentanyl crisis, how can you combat it? Third, it can help coordinate the city, county, and state resources. Fourth, it can help to publicly share and report data, which is crucial in understanding this gap in our services, our knowledge, and the needs of our community. Fourth, it can, finally, and this is of utmost importance, this is to save lives, never mind the bipartisan support that should be indicated by those who initially supported this resolution, but I would ask that you think about your children, your brothers, your sisters, your mothers, and your friends, your fathers, and those who suffer because of this insidious disease. Fentanyl is deadly. I need not have to explain the seriousness of the circumstances of which we are faced with today here in Spokane. You stand at the gates of our community and have the choices to open them, yet you wait, for what reason, I ask. Do not let your personal affiliations demand your vote. Think, and consider what a bipartisan deal of this magnitude can do for our affected population. Then make an informed decision. Consider the resolution set before you today. Vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Next, we will have Sam Lee. Next, we will have Sam Lee. And then Brianna Gorder.
I want to specifically address Bingle's Amendment. Bingle's Amendment classifies the use of Narcan as dangerous enough to involuntarily commit people under Ricky's Law. Under Ricky's Law, if someone is posing a threat to themselves, others, or property, they will be involuntarily committed. Therapists are also welcome to use Ricky's Law, which also makes them agents of the state unless mental health professionals are intentionally practicing decolonizing therapy. Bingle's Amendment traps people in incarceration and hospitalization cycles that gives justification for the existence and funding of police. Carceral violence exacerbates the systemic issues for white people use in their first place. It's a veil for more police surveillance and criminalization of using a life-saving drug so the rich can get richer while the masses suffer. This is exactly the amendment a Christian nationalist in support of the IDF and the genocide of Palestinians has to offer the people of Spokane. I cannot find any long-term data on the effectiveness of Ricky's Law in Washington State. It seems to me that data collection is used to prove the usefulness of services that are already available and merely need funding instead of contending with the fact that our entire infrastructure needs an overhaul. It is our government that declared the war on drugs, a means of social control that targeted black people, and yet capitalism spreads the propaganda that drug use is the problem of the individual. How about invest money into communities so we aren't deprived of basic needs, and there would be no need to give money to nonprofits that serve as only bandages for systemic oppression? People in Spokane are starving here and now, and these same capitalist imperialist systems are working to starve Palestinian people. I don't think you're ignorant of this, Bingle. It was racist when you held up your fist last week when I said that you were at the IDF soldier event supporting a war criminal, and this amendment is also racist. I don't expect your racist actions to stop, and you need to be held accountable. Free Palestine and abolish the police.
Thank you. Bri- Please. No comments from the audience. Thank you, Brianna.
Council members. Jonathan. Thank you, I think. My name's Bree. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am coming to you today as a recovering addict, a business owner, and somebody who was formerly homeless. I stand here before you not in just my capacity, but as one of the many community members who signed the petition urging the city to confront the fentanyl epidemic in our midst. I acknowledge that the resolution we're discussing, it was one step among many required to address the crisis. However, I'm hoping in the future we can revisit utilizing Ricky's Law. That legislation has not only saved my life, but the lives of countless others who are on the path of recovery. Compassion is not absent from accountability. Rather, it is a vital component of it. By holding individuals accountable, we offer them a pathway to redemption and recovery. Let us remember this as we move forward in our fight against addiction in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bree. Stacy Wells, then Sheri Barnett.
Greetings, council members and council president, and thank you for your service. My name is Stacy Wells. I'm already crying. Jesus, pardon me. During the course of my work, the first week of February, I was called to an apartment building where a gentleman had died of a fentanyl overdose. And as hard as that was, I not only knew the deceased, but I know and worked with his adult son. He was called to the scene as well. And as sad as I was about losing the person that we lost, the thing that impacted me the most was standing beside this grown man who thankfully was standing next to a lamppost when the body of his father was dragged down the stairs without the benefit of a gurney because of the curving stairs, in that white body bag heaved onto the gurney that was waiting on the sidewalk. And I watched this man break. I watched him collapse into the light post, and I watched him weep and heard him wail and cry out for his father. And I watched our Spokane Police Department chaplain comfort him and say words over the deceased, and I watched our law enforcement officers stand respectfully by the side of the man who was suffering and the man who we had lost due to a fentanyl overdose that day. I was on that scene for three hours, and during that time, in speaking with our police department, those officers told us that this was, on that day, the third fentanyl overdose death that they had responded to, that day, and it wasn't even noon. Every fentanyl death is like a ripple in a pond, and those ripples go out and they impact neighbors and friends and family and community service providers and first responders and police officers and our entire community. And this kind of trauma is a sickness that this city is holding in its body until we do something. And I want to thank Councilmember Dylan and the supporters, Bingle and Sabone, I think those are the three. I know it's Paul, I see you. I want to thank you for doing something because we have got to do something. And even if this is not the best solution or the only solution, it is a beginning, and we must collect resources from every place that we can access so that we can do something about this trauma that this city is not the only city enduring, but this city is very, very sick from and will only get sicker if we don't address it.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for your service.
Sheri, and then Tavita, I think he's online.
President Wilkerson and all members of the city council, some time ago, I remember being down here and many people were reading letters from people who were addicts begging our legislature, not you people, but the legislature, not to legalize these drugs. And even, I hadn't even hardly heard about fentanyl then. But we begged, we knew people that were just lost the meth or the heroin or some other drug, just owned them. And it not only owns them, but it breeds cartels, sex trafficking, child trafficking. It is a stench, and we have tied the hands of police and we've made it, I've watched it grow since they approved that. I agree that we need to do this, but we also need to make it to where these don't have a place to trap children and adults because it's stronger than a lot of people wants that touches them, and it can be done accidentally. I just urge us to have an education system that goes throughout this city. So I don't know what fentanyl smells like, but I've heard people say it has a smell. I think that everybody should get an education on what these drugs are, what they're doing, and how to contract them, how to recognize the symptoms that somebody is taking them or manufacturing them or distributing them. And I know of one person who died of fentanyl poisoning, and she was not a dummy, and she didn't want to be on it. So God help us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Tavita?
Go ahead, Tavita, you're unmuted.
Name is Tavita Fakasiaki. And one of the issues I have with this is that it doesn't, it doesn't list the mental health epidemic that we are also having that leads into the addiction of taking fentanyl. And many people don't want to take fentanyl, and just like me, and like, it's the ability to understand what is happening and why is it happening. And the what is happening is the epidemic of the fentanyl crisis and the drug overdosing. The reason to that is because many people are struggling to find themselves in a place of financial stability to where they can become mentally stable. And when we think about it, it's not just mental health, but it's also the systemic oppression that many people who take these illicit drugs and are just lost. And at some point, they need some guidance to come out of this lost state of affairs. But I think that the state of emergency may help just a little bit to put a bandage on the deepening wound of this war on drugs.
Thank you, Tavita. Amy Manning?
Thank you, Council President, council members. Thanks for working on this. My name is Amy Manning, and I'm here with Experience Matters. I have lived experience in homelessness, and I'm here to ask you to vote in favor of this resolution. I want to thank council members Dylan, Bingle, Sabone, and I think Councilmember Klitsky also worked on it. This is a good first step. We have a long way to go. In my family, my brother-in-law just lost his youngest nephew, he was 17, to fentanyl overdose in Idaho. And that loss is, he will never graduate high school, he will never have a family, he will never be able to do that. And that, what Stacy said about that rippling through our family and our community is true. We know that fentanyl is 50 times stronger than heroin and about 100 times stronger than morphine. We know that a relatively small amount can kill somebody. And we do not, what we do not know is how many people in our community have died. We don't know the number of overdoses. We don't know what, we know it's an emergency, but we really don't know the depth or the breadth of it. We know by experiences that, and the stories that we tell and the things that we're witnessing. But we really need the data-driven parts of this to understand what the steps, what the next steps are for our community. And so this resolution really attempts to get at that. And I just, I also should say, the letter from Experience Matters is still circulating, and we have 545 people that have signed it and over 50 organizations. And we're still circulating it because we still feel like there's people out there who need to understand. We also are really excited about a public education campaign because that data on like knowing how strong it is and how easily somebody can overdose is significant and that the general community doesn't always know good information on that and what risks they're taking. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Julie Garcia, and then Justin Holler.
Council members, thank you for putting this resolution forward. Have you ever tried to save somebody's life? And have you ever done it every single day unsuccessfully? That's where my crew is. This is what we do every single day. We Narcan people, and sometimes they come back to life and sometimes they don't. And the sad thing is, is hours later, they're doing the same thing, and we start all over again. And it's a vicious cycle. It's traumatizing, not only to the people in addiction, but it's traumatizing to the people who have to serve these folks. And we do so every single day, and it's too much. It's too much for all of us. So I support this 100%. Councilmember Bingle, I support your Ricky's Law 100%. But the problem is, is we create all these ordinances and we create all these laws, and we never create the infrastructure to support them. So Ricky's Law is great. I could show you 500 people that we could help with it, but I don't have 500 treatment beds, and I don't have any resources for those folks. So if we're going to do this, let's start the first step, and let's focus on putting infrastructure in place. We need treatment beds. We need mental health help. We need behavioral health help. Because I don't know how long those of us on the front lines can continue to hold down the fort for everybody else. It's overwhelming, and it's too much. I personally can't handle many more people dying as I'm trying to give them CPR. So thank you for doing this, and I hope it's a first good step.
Justin Holler, and then Will Hughings, and then Dennis Flynn.
Hello, still Justin, District One. About, I don't know much about Ricky's Law, but I'm all for jail rehab or a ticket out of town. I think we spend way too much money on the homeless industrial complex. And maybe if we're $50 million over budget, we shouldn't be coddling addicts and letting them run rampant amongst our city. And I've talked to several law enforcement officers in my dealings with people downtown and being attacked seven times and having addicts tell me, "Mind my own life and business" when they yell at my building at 3:00 in the morning. That there's 10% of the people making 90% of the crime and 90% of the nuisance calls. And maybe if we offered something that was compassionate, which is rehab versus just keeping letting them go, or in fact jail rehab or a ticket out of town, instead of letting people take Narcan as many as 43 times in a year. Rob McCann has actually bragged about that statistic and saying, "Oh, for just $8,600, we can house these people instead of jail them." But maybe we should hold some of these nonprofits, particularly Rob McCann, who's the biggest offender, accountable for all the overdoses that happen in and around their buildings. If you look at Pacific and State and everywhere near that, there's five low-income buildings where there's copious amounts of drug addicts that are getting their fix. Someone's looking the other way. And I know that law enforcement can't do their job worth a squat because their hands are tied on a lot of things, but someone is definitely looking the other way when you have all these overdoses, which means you have all these drug sales. And maybe if we could go after the money and see who benefits, like the nonprofits, maybe penalize the nonprofits if they're not performing. If nonprofits have 100 calls for Narcan revival in a month, maybe give them a $10,000 fine. Maybe that would make them act right. Maybe that would encourage the nonprofits that we pay for, that we subsidize through NGOs and all these other programs, that we play shell games with the money, but it's our money. Maybe if we didn't coddle these addicts and held the nonprofits accountable, maybe we could get some real results versus just letting addicts overdose and overdose and overdose and keep wasting our money. It's not compassionate to allow drug addicts to keep getting revived, especially not 43 times a year. That's the biggest amount that I've heard.
Will?
Good evening again. My name is Will Hughings, and I live downtown. I want to show my somewhat- Um I want to show my somewhat support for this resolution. You all should know how I feel about nasty fentanyl. I've spoke about it, I don't know how many times in open forum and different times, especially last year and this year. But uh I am, like I said, somewhat for this. Sorry, I lost my notes. But um so I have spoken about fentanyl in Spokane many times. Um I hate fentanyl. Just so you know, I have a good friend that passed away from fentanyl. His name's Jeff Davis and I miss him. Really good friend. Uh fentanyl, a synthetic opioid, has emerged as a deadly scourge on our city, wreaking havoc and devastation with its potent and deadly effects. Just uh in the recent months, or actually, yeah, in recent months, the prevalence of fentanyl overdoses has reached alarming levels here in Spokane. It's very infuriating, someone that lives downtown, walking out my apartment and seeing uh grown adults um on the sidewalk with foil, smoking pills. Now, I strongly disagree with them, you guys calling it a disease. I think it's a choice. People have choice on what they do. They like right now, I've heard it's twenty, you can get a fentanyl pill for twenty-five cents. Then you can so do the math. A dollar, you go out there and beg for some change, get a couple of dollars and then go buy quite a few fentanyl pills and then you smoke them on the sidewalk and then you overdose. And then, you know, we come and save you with Narcan and, you know, we 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 save your life and then next thing you know, you're back out at it doing it again. And that's what happens. And it's very sad because it's been happening for quite a while since like probably like twenty nineteen, since I've learned about fentanyl. But I'm glad that somebody or they're you guys are finally starting to address this problem. But um I hope you can do more and uh something that I think would work is maybe um make it uncomfortable for these drug addicts, maybe show them uh, you know, just make it uncomfortable, force them into treatment and also death to drug dealers.
Thank you. Dennis?
Council President, Council, Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Uh first off, I support the Bingle Amendment. I think I've told you before, at least once long ago, about my own addiction in the past and and I don't know how I got through it other than the love of a best woman I've ever known. Um mine was with um, you know, amphetamines instead of a depressant. So maybe there's a difference there, I don't know. But if it's fentanyl now, it was heroin before and opium and and uh sitting on a jury trial several years ago, young kid just progressed from taking pills to taking more pills to smoking pills and that led to stealing and eventually hurting somebody. My extended family has lost uh my nephew. And it's it's not compassionate. I mean, at some point, you can let somebody go and and hope that they can turn things around, whether it's through support from friends, family or social services. At another point, they've gotten to the point where it is not compassionate to let them go. And involuntary commitment is something that we need to do. And then it comes back to what they was what other people were talking about is the money, right? So you all have to make choices all the time. And so where do we spend the money? Where does the money come from? What do we prioritize? And you can't do everything. We can't have this, that, and the other after-school program. We can't have this, that, and the other uh housing program. We can't have this, that, and the other. I mean, you can't have it all. You have to choose one. I don't envy your positions at all. And I thank you for doing them. So the things I wrote down, I wanted to talk about this is, I don't know why you're using it, why you're limiting it in the statute to limit the use of one drug, I think is naloxone. I'm not sure if I wrote that down right. I mean, why not include any drug, you know, that fits a description to bring somebody back that in that way, if something new comes around, you don't have to rewrite the law. Um I propose you attach a re so I don't know why we're not requiring the um the voluntary voluntary monthly report from all shelters. So until we get that wording changed into mandatory reporting, we should attach that to any uh required reporting to any future funding. Because I know the responders are in your statute that they will have to produce their own reports, but if they produce their reports and the shelters produce their reports, uh that might show a point of comparison that would be very useful in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Council Commentary?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Just thank you, everybody, um coming down. Uh it's been a very emotional and heartfelt uh testimony. Um I I just can't thank you enough. I want to cover a little bit about what this resolution does. First, uh the governor um declaring a state of emergency for the opioid and fentanyl crisis. We've seen uh nine states uh in total either declare a state of emergency or a public health crisis and they've been able to leverage a lot of resources, especially for the procurement uh of Narcan. I think with um Mr. Flynn's comment too, I think uh that is something down the road that we should definitely be open to as more uh options to reverse the effects of an overdose do come along. Uh you know, the governor's office, there's been some coverage around this uh too. They've been a little uh reluctant um to honor um that part of the resolution. Uh we did have a couple of discussions. We're gonna have a a follow-up and invited Councilmember Bingle to that and uh folks from Experience Matters and some folks who testified tonight. Um and I think their response definitely shows that um this resolution, that part of it is having an impact, but I really believe uh especially with the numbers that we've seen, uh we should never be satisfied with our response. Uh there's been some great investments that the state has made uh this past session, particularly with investments around tribal communities and fentanyl. Um that was great to see, but um still, uh this based on the data that we're seeing, um we should not be patting ourselves on the back. We know that there's a lot more that can be done, especially after hearing a lot of the testimony tonight. Better data from the Spokane Regional Health District, there's been quite a bit of coverage around this. Uh we did have in our first uh meeting, Chair in Public Safety and Community Health, we had uh Shrek come down, our Spokane Regional Emergency Communication Center, and we asked uh about uh fentanyl data, especially with uh overdoses, something that Councilmember Cathcart uh was asking about as well. And it was very hard to get a a straight answer. Uh nobody knew. Out of that, we did get um some better reporting from our fire department and Spokane Police. Um but with respect to the uh Health District, and we did have a meeting with Dr. Velasquez and uh Dr. Alicia Thompson, uh it was very clear that, you know, we are behind uh in a lot of ways, especially with uh King County and Snohomish. If you were to go on their sites, you would see a real-time dashboard that as of today, you could see where overdoses were at. The Health District, it's really hard uh to get data, to navigate their um website and some of the most recent data that you'll see is from twenty twenty-two. And as policymakers, we need to make data-driven decisions and so it's really, really important uh that we have that. It's also important for providers, nonprofits, and transparency. And then uh with respect to uh the Town Hall, uh that will be on April ninth. I'm really excited about this. Um we're assembling a panel. It'll be at the uh Central Library from uh five to seven. Um this is also continuing uh the momentum um just around this community conversation, how we can have a better response, particularly with uh opioid settlement funds and how we can use that for uh education and awareness. Uh we've heard a lot of comments tonight about Ricky's Law. Um Councilmember Bingle can speak uh more on that. Um I do appreciate him bringing that up. Um I will totally uh own my air in not uh getting back to him, I think, quicker on this amendment. I'm still kind of learning the process around our rules and um I support Ricky's Law. Uh I think that um to Julie Garcia's point around the infrastructure component, um you know, when the legislature did pass Ricky's Law, there were uh two places that were really designated to get this uh, you know, involuntary treatment, and that was in Spokane County and Chehalis, I believe. And then with the law by twenty twenty-six, uh the state was supposed to create uh more centers. They haven't. And so I really want to see us think about um our request to the state to really meet the uh need and demand that we see, that we hear from uh our first responders, that we hear from providers. Because uh I think it is a a bigger conversation, um but I definitely support the uh intent of the law. Um kind of floated uh including uh an oral amendment in here. There wasn't much of a appetite to suspend the rules tonight. But uh I think it is definitely worth uh more conversation and I'm hoping that we can also talk more about this uh at the Town Hall and um the twenty twenty-five legislative session. But I just really want to thank uh Experience Matters. Um you know, y'all brought this to us early. Um Councilmember Bingle met with you, I met with you, um all the community members. Uh Will Hughlings, I'll take your somewhat supportive uh response as a is a win. But uh just can't thank you all enough uh for coming down and um this really, really does matter. It is a small step forward. Um it's not the end of anything, um but um I'm really excited that we are taking this step.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I want to thank uh Councilmember Dylan um for bringing this forward. Um you know, uh there was a weekend a while back where we heard that there were forty overdose overdoses uh in a weekend. And we all sort of looked at each other like, there's no way. Forty, like, yeah, that's just a generic number for a lot, right? There was a lot of overdoses. And sure enough, as we met with the Experience Matters folks, we found out, oh my goodness, there was forty overdoses this last weekend. And uh I think it really opened a lot of our eyes to understand. I mean, we knew that it was bad. I don't think we realized how bad it had become. And uh so we started working pretty quickly to try and get something going. We learned about some programs down in Oregon where they were coordinating resources and trying to get data so that we could better address this issue. And um and now we're here. And uh you know, there is there's uh at least a thousand things we could be doing um on this um particular issue. But this right here is a step in the right direction and uh you know, the old adage about how to eat an elephant, right? It's one bite at a time. This is one step, this is one bite, there's plenty more for us to do and we'll continue to do it because I know that we on this council are all very committed to uh fighting against the scourge of fentanyl and uh opioid addiction um here in uh in the city of Spokane. And uh I I proposed an amendment earlier today um that absolutely would involuntarily detain somebody if they were uh if they had overdosed and they were brought back to life, if they were brought to um by naloxone, also known as Narcan. Um what that would do is that would take that person off the streets, try to get them into a state where they were uh thinking more clearly. Uh because people in that state, as you heard Julie testify to, um oftentimes what happens is you bring somebody back and I've heard stories from people being mad that you, you know, killed their high to uh going back to uh finding themselves in that state again. I mean, and they're, I mean, it's incredibly addictive, it's incredibly powerful. And uh this last weekend, I was walking downtown in the Second and Brown um area uh as we were doing some cleanup stuff and uh walked somebody, watched somebody walk by, they dropped a little baggy. I was like, oh, hey, you dropped something. And I went to pick it up and sure enough, it was just, you know, full of full of the blues. And uh so I I allowed them to pick it up and uh take it for themselves. Uh and uh uh they they hurried away quickly because the the police were by as we were doing the um the cleanup. But uh something that hit me so powerfully and I'll never I'll never be able to forget it. I've done this once before, but I want to do it again. All right? So this right here, this right here is a C and H sugar packet, okay? This contains three and a half grams of sugar, okay? Two milligrams of fentanyl can kill somebody. This amount of sugar right here, that's enough fentanyl to kill one thousand seven hundred and fifty people. That is not a lot. That is not a lot. You think about the how powerful fentanyl is and how dangerous it is to our community. It's an absolute weapon that's being used against us by foreign adversaries to destabilize the United States. We must, we must, sorry, point of order, yeah. I appreciate that, but um but it's it's a weapon being used against us and we must protect our people. Um I still support my Ricky's Law Amendment. Uh I hope to bring it forward again. But again, this is a serious problem for us, not only in this city, but in this country. And again, I could not be more grateful to the people on the front lines who are dealing with it every day. I'm sorry for what you have to deal with. Your testimony touches my heart as well because you are the people who are actually there bringing people back to life and I cannot imagine the trauma that 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 instills on your people. And so just want to thank you for all the efforts that you're doing. Again, thank you, Councilmember Dylan and Councilmember Sabone for um co-sponsoring this and getting this going forward. I I will be supporting and there will be plenty more uh coming forward on this issue.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to thank uh Councilmember Dylan for bringing this forward and all the work that you put in on this. Uh thank you to Councilmember Bingle for bringing the amendment forward. Unfortunately, that did not pass, but I do agree with it. I think it's really important that we find a way to enforce Ricky's Law. Um that was passed five years ago now and it really has not been utilized like it should be. But at the end of the day, I think the only way we are going to truly get a handle on this, uh in addition to enforcing our our own rules and own laws here in the city, is for the state to step up in a really big, meaningful way uh when it comes to mental health treatment, drug treatment, all these things. And this is a great start. I think this really makes a mark uh uh and puts the state on notice that, hey, we we need you to step up. Uh what you have done to date is great, but we need you to do a heck of a lot more. Um and I'm hopeful that the governor will consider the declaration of emergency. I'm hopeful that that will come with some resources that we can utilize. But at the end of the day, it's got to be really smart investments that are truly going to help uh the individuals that are experiencing the addiction. And so I hope this works. I hope that this, you know, starts us on a positive path. And so once again, just thanks to Councilmember Dylan for bringing this forward.
Yeah, I'll just say thanks for everyone for coming down and thank you again, Councilmember Dylan for supporting this. I think uh all council members up here are very concerned about um the role of fentanyl in our community and are taking it seriously. I don't really have much more to add, but just thanks again for the for bringing this forward.
Councilman Kletzky?
I want to thank Experience Matters for bringing this issue up and taking it out to the community. I think that's really meaningful work. And I want to thank Councilmember Dylan for doing the lion's share of the work on this uh resolution. I'm just a humble supporter. Um I do have to say that um in my district, there seem pretty split on the idea of involuntary treatment. And I think I understand why. And I think that that concept needs a little more work before we can move forward with it. But the work that I'm most interested, I think, is the work that Julie Garcia brought up, is the infrastructure. If we're going to talk about that issue, we should have facilities in place to take people. And right now, it's kind of uh exercising futility to do that because we don't and we're we're abysmally behind um to have the resources that would actually be able to answer this problem. So I'm really grateful for all of the peer counseling and volunteers that have been doing so much, trying to fill that void. And you're right, it's not sustainable. We need to do better.
Thank you. And again, echo all that's been said.
Just one more really quickly. Uh I really believe that, you know, up here, we're only uh as effective as our staff. And so I really want to shout out uh Ginny Ramos, my legislative aide, Nicola Okultry, and also Chris Wright for really helping craft this.
Absolutely. Councilman McCattar?
Yeah, if I could just add one quick thing too. Uh Councilmember Dylan had mentioned earlier about the opioid abatement dollars. Councilmember Dylan had mentioned earlier about the opioid abatement dollars, and I think it's important that we really consider how we spend those real thoughtfully. For those that don't know, over the next several years, we're going to be getting quite a bit of money as a result of a settlement. And, and I know the county is actually looking to invest some of those dollars into data, but also into expanding their stabilization center. And so I think, you know, meaningful investments like that is what we need to be looking at, and that will also go a long way in helping with the crisis we're facing.
So, again, all that's been said, I agree with. I want to thank the council in its entirety for supporting this, because we are leading in this. I think what this really does is lean into the other systems out there and make them step up their game. We're talking about Spokane, but there are cities all around us. I mean, it just doesn't stop at our city borders. So the valley and Airway High, and Deer Park, and all the area, other areas where people are experiencing fentanyl, we have to take that in consideration because we're just not this little island unto ourself and the other systems that we can encourage, but we don't control them. So your support and leaning in on those other systems, whether it's the health district or another municipality, is just as critical as it has been how you came to the city. So again, thank you all for that. Continue your activism, and are you ready to vote? Councilmember Navaratti, what's your vote? Councilmember Navaratti, your vote?
I couldn't unmute, I'm sorry. Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, everyone.
First reading ordinance C 36504 altering the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, creating the Lodging Tax Advisory Program, amending sections 4.30.010 and 4.030.020 of the Spokane municipal code, and adding a new section to chapter 04.30 of the Spokane municipal code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
We have one commentary. Mr. Will Hewlings.
My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown. I am, I want to express my strong disapproval of ordinance C 36504. While I understand the supposed objective of the liberal LTAC, also known as the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, is to support tourism-related projects and facilitates and facilities in Spokane. I believe the focus should be on addressing more pressing issues such as public safety before allocating and collecting funds to attract tourists and businesses. As someone that lives downtown, it's just eye-opening. You guys try to promote tourism. We got people going to a basketball tournament, and all I see is the city out there cleaning up the graffiti, cleaning up the, you know, the sidewalks, and, you know, the media, you know, you guys just painting a picture of something that's not true. It's, and I don't care, I live down here. It's dirty, it's filthy, and I don't understand why now you want to, you know, have tax collectors, basically. So let me get back to what I was talking about. The LTAC serves as an advisory body to the city council, and something I don't understand is why I couldn't speak about this when you guys elected, like, last week. I couldn't speak on you guys electing, and I would have read this, but of course, now I have to read it now. But basically, like I said, I'm against this. I'm going to email this, this long statement I have. Maybe you can better understand my, I mean, I know you're going to vote on this, but, um, yeah. Strongly oppose this. Thank you.
Can I clarify? Yeah, just, I think what he was referencing was, we did an appointment to the LTAC at the town hall, but then we deferred this ordinance, so we didn't vote on it there. That's why I wasn't speaking on the ordinance itself, but just doing the appointment last week, we're taking as two separate actions.
And I was going to say, I for, I mentioned at committee today that the LTAC committee was looking at this ordinance. I forgot to mention that they would like time to review it, and they won't be meeting again until April 12th. So I'll ask for a referral at the next briefing, but just wanted to highlight that. I forgot.
All right, thank you. Can we continue to open forum, or would council like a five-minute break?
Go right into it.
All right. We'll go on to open forum. We'll be starting with Lucas Yenney. And then we will have Eugene Knowles. Is Lucas in the house?
Lucas, if you're online, can you hit star three?
Good evening, City Council. In case you are not aware, as of this morning, the United Nations Security Council passed an immediate ceasefire resolution in Gaza, in effect for the next two weeks or the remainder of Ramadan. It was passed unanimously, 14 to zero, with the United States abstaining for the first time instead of their usual veto. I echo what I have said before. Public sentiment is shifting, and you would be wise to notice. The longer you wait to pass a ceasefire resolution, the longer you stay on the wrong side of history. The live videos and images of the barbaric genocide of the Palestinians have become a catalyst for global activism on levels we have rarely seen in our history. There are no words to adequately condemn what we have witnessed from the IDF in the past six months. Evil comes close. We have seen starved corpses rotting in the streets, children with their flesh burned down to the bone from the use of illegal white phosphorus, hellish landscapes of gnarled concrete and twisted steel. Perhaps you still haven't seen these images, though I'm increasingly certain you have. The IDF certainly has. They watch with twisted glee, captured on countless videos they self-publish. For an ever-increasing number of nations, the United States has lost all credibility on the global stage. Our hubris will be our downfall. The council, or this council passing the historically bankrupt resolution in support of Israel back in October is what got me to come down here in the first place. You made it city business. Over these six months, I feel like I've really gotten to know you, see you for who you are and where your true priorities lie. But we are all capable of growth and of change and forgiveness. It is never too late to right the wrongs of the past. In the spirit of resurrection and renewal this Easter, I call you, a call on you to pass a ceasefire resolution and support the process of bringing peace and healing to your fellow man.
Thank you, Lucas.
Thank you.
Eugene?
Eugene Knowles, I've been here in Spokane since 2010. Yeah, this, this, I thought we were going to get through without the Israel thing.
Hey, please.
I thought we were going to get through this without too much of the Israel thing, but it popped up just before I got up here, so I have to say, you guys are all right on that. You know, people are going to condemn you one way or the other. You're close enough. Now, here's what I wanted to talk about, because you're in my ballpark now. The, the drug dealing. I'm a professional observer of drug dealing. You're talking to the man now. So, you know, here's the deal, I'm going to be short on this. Here's what you got to do. You got a new police chief coming in. You got to get to know him and know what he's up to.
Or her. Just saying.
You got to get to know the special agent in the FBI here. These drugs don't grow on trees. You got professionals who have two jobs. They run big companies, and they do drugs, they do drugs on the side. They wear business suits, and they're, they're right among us. You think they're one of us, but they're the voice. You punish these people for, you know, going out here doing drugs, those are the wrong people. You got to have guts to get with the FBI. Get to know them. They got to get to know you. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Thank you, Dan. And next after that will be Raul Pena.
Dan DeBois, born and raised Spokane. Second Corinthians 5:10 says, "For we must all appear before the judgment at seat of Christ, so that each of us may receive what is due us for the things done while in the body, whether good or bad." I was in these chambers, in fact, speaking in open forum against this body's decision to denounce Mayor Woodward for attendance at a worship service led by Sean Foote, one I, which I also attended. This council's inflammatory accusations about Christian nationalism were clearly political. If you remember, we went until almost 11:00 PM that night with overwhelmingly majority, 11 to 1 majority of citizen speakers firmly against this body taking that action. It was in the council's discussion that followed that open forum prior to the vote, it was obvious some of the council had been given legal advice against taking this action. I believe Councilmember Cathcart had suggested that the legal advice should be made public, which was not approved. Of course, a decision was then made to move forward with the denouncement, again, apparently against legal advice. Since then, the majority of this council that took this ridiculous action have been repeatedly called out for the mere anti-Christian political stunt that it was. I would now like to add that the four council members, both present and past, have, that did vote to denounce Mayor Woodward, were most likely facing another legal battle, again, at taxpayers' expense. You took action against legal advice that put my city in financial jeopardy. When is it that this council sets its course of action firmly in doing the will and business of the people of Spokane from a position that is customarily protects our city? When can we expect that personal agendas will be left at the door, and your work is solely about the challenges that face Spokane and not about you personally, what you personally or politically want to see accomplished? And finally, when is an apology coming to the Christian community for the slander that you used? Thank you.
Thank you. Raul?
Good evening, council members. My name is Raul Pena, District One, Logan Community. And I want to thank you all for attending the meeting last Monday. You heard the concerns of our district and what we have, what we put forward. Another thing I want to, and I really commend you all for doing and listening to the concern. The fentanyl that everybody's talking about is an addiction. Most of the people that are addicted are trying to escape their reality. The reality is, they can't confirm, conform to the standards, the laws that Spokane has put forth. We voted, and now things are being repealed. You know, and not through you all, but higher-ups are making decisions that are making your policies ineffective, inadequate. People want to defund the police. We need more police out there to protect us from what's going on. Everybody talks about what's happening overseas. We don't care about what happens overseas because there is nothing we can do. You can't vote on something that other countries can do. We have no right to tell others to do what we can't do for ourselves. We need to concentrate on things that are here in our town to protect our citizens, to make this a better environmental, so we can bring other entities, you know, other people to come as tourists. How can we invite others to come into our town when we can't even protect them on our streets? This weekend with the basketball, y'all did a fantastic job out here cleaning Second and Division and downtown. You go out there this morning, they're back. Let the police do their job and arresting. If all the 501
Thank you, Raul.
Entities get together, they can build their own place to house these people.
Thank you. Janelle.
Hi, my name's Janelle Simpson, and I live in Spokane here. I sent you guys this email, I'm sorry, it's kind of redundant, but the current homeless and addiction problems that are affecting our community are of grave concern. As a Spokane resident, improving the quality of life for the community as a whole, as well as their daily lives, of those that struggle is imperative to the health and growth of this city. We've all witnessed the numerous attempts to address these issues with no success and even dangerous growth of these problems. As I'm sure you have done your due diligence for solutions to these problems, I've ran across a business model out of Portland, Oregon, that has experienced success for over 45 years. The name of the organization is Central City Concern. They offer housing, healthcare, recovery, and employment resources to those in need. After studying their website, which is citycentralconcern.org, you'll see how they strategically structured their administrative staff to competently tackle these issues that are affecting their population. Their holistic approach has helped thousands regain their lives while also enriching the community. If you've not already, I urge you to look into this business model, as Spokane needs to do something different. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunshine? Is she still here? Sunshine?
I can see her out there.
I can see her out there. Let's go to Sherri Barnett, and maybe Sunshine will step in.
Council President Will Chrisson and all members of the city council, I'm Sherri Barnett of Spokane. And it was quite a long time ago, I can't even remember exactly how long ago, that I first came down here. And I had never attended a council meeting, and I was appalled, because it felt like there was a direction that you were headed in, where you were going away from the Constitution and away from God. And I see that still progressing. And I know you're smarter than me, but there are words that are true and make a dumb person smart in the Bible. And those laws, we're ignoring. And I believe in all these things that we do, that we need to be temperate, because I see in Canada, you see what they're doing to Christians? When you, when the city council labeled Matt Shea and Nadine Woodward as terrorists and Christian nationalists like they were bad, that sends a chill up my spine that we're not going to have freedom and that we will be punished for stating our Christian beliefs, that bakers might lose everything that they've worked a whole life for just because they won't bake a certain kind of cake. And I don't want to, I don't want to start any quarrel, but I do want to see this nation because God is hope and God is love, and He's the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Sunshine, and then Cherry Hill.
Sunshine from Spokane, Washington. An old Chinese proverb, "Make happy those who are near, and those who are far will come." Helping people help themselves is key. One of my bully's famous sayings to me were, "You were free." One of my bully's famous sayings to me were, "You were free. It's not like we searched for you to bully you. We only did it when we ran into you." I had pictures of them on my counter with a note saying, "If I die, these bullies probably did it for 25 years in my houses." Today, I got to face one of, one and hand them those pictures. It's never too late to heal from bullying, and it's never too late to stop bullying. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
Terry Hill, longtime Spokane resident. The city currently faces a $50 million budget deficit. No action has been taken. There's been a lot of discussion, but one thing that's certain to come up is some type of bond or other tax increase. Before you look to this old taxpayer for any more money, I suggest the city, I suggest the city address two wasteful issues. Number one, $30,000 a month paid to a millionaire for a warehouse on East Trent with no toilets. Number two, the lease paid, a lease paid to a Colorado firm for a posh building downtown seldom used by our Spokane Police Department, $13,000 a month. Address those, address those two issues before you look to me for any money. I thank you for your service to Spokane, and I yield the podium.
Thank you, Terry. Tavita Vasicki?
Go ahead, Tavita. You're unmuted.
Hey, Betsy Wilkinson and council members. I'm just going to correct you, Betsy Wilkinson, because I thought it was kind of funny. It's Fakas Yeki.
Thank you. I'm going to get it right. I promise.
You're, you're okay. It happens all the time. I want to just say that for those calling to rescind what happened to Mayor Woodward, you can't really, like, do that at this point. There has been many churches and faith leaders throughout the community that had actually denounced Nadine Woodward for her actions against Matt Shea or for her actions that coincide and interconnect with Matt Shea and what happened. And Matt Shea is known to be a right, alt-right nationalist, not Christian, because if you were really a Christian, you would understand that God is something more than what we have. And I'll just read what I was going to say with this, that, "Why can't you, City Council, not listen to those who are urgently calling out for a ceasefire? If we do call out for one, we can easily be one of the many who have passed resolutions and be for the peaceful end to this mass genocide." It isn't that difficult when we've been seeing more diff, more children being killed from airstrikes, snipers, mines, and artillery weapons, which are considered weapons of mass destruction. Whole familial lines have been cut to, to this, due to this genocide. I see this as another Holocaust happening on our phones-
Thank you, Tavita. Your time is up.
All right. Yep, thank you.
Dave M., Andrew Crowley, and then Will Huelings.
Go ahead, Dave. You're unmuted.
Good evening, Council. Dave M., Spokane. This will apply to some of you and not apply to others of you. Public officials can now be held liable for blocking critics on social media, a ruling of nine to zero on March 15th by the U.S. Supreme Court. The Supreme Court ruled that public officials, and that's public officials, not only elected officials, who post topics relating to their work on personal social media accounts are acting on behalf of the government and therefore can be held liable for violating the First Amendment. When they block their critics, when they have the power to speak, they are actually exercising that power. Blocking someone from social media page that contains both personal and official posts could also prevent someone from commenting on official posts. A public official who fails to keep personal posts in a clearly designated personal account therefore exposes himself to a greater potential liability. Those on the council who have done that to various city citizens or even non-citizens, you know who you are. Second thing is Lisa Brown is now creating an affordable housing list that splits the housing 50/50 between citizens of Spokane and illegal aliens. This puts our citizens in competition with non-citizens within the city. This further proves Brown doesn't care about you, the citizen. You are now being moved down the list. And just one other comment. Mr. Dillon, your mic is still popping, so I don't know if you can look at the distance between the other mics, but it would be easier to hear you if that wasn't going on. Thank you, Council. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Andrew?
Hi, my name is Andrew Cowley. I'm a Spokane resident and a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. So since this council passed their first resolution in support of apartheid Israel on October 9th, more than 15,000 Palestinian children have been killed. The death of one child is a permanently traumatizing event, permanently, for any community. Palestinian communities, including diaspora communities right here in this part of the country, have experienced that trauma 15,000 times and counting in a matter of months. As you sit in your privileged positions on stolen land in this deeply complicit country to pass a resolution for a genocide that actually uses the word ceasefire and demands an end to U.S. aid to this genocide, making that same demand that you've heard your community make, that dozens of city councils across the country have passed, that would be the very least that you can do. The allegedly progressive members of this council have yet to even introduce such a resolution. The compromise resolution from January is not enough. We demand an explicit call for a ceasefire and a permanent end to imperialist and Zionist aggression in Palestine. Free Palestine!
Thank you. Point of privilege, council. Could you hold that for a second, Will? Councilmember Navaratti has her hand up. Like, make a comment. Personal privilege, council member?
Yes, um, thank you. I just want to comment on a, the previous comment that was made by the gentleman that the word illegal alien is dehumanizing and the correct word is undocumented immigrants. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Will?
My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. So I just want to comment real quick. As a veteran, as a service-connected veteran, someone missing part of their body, I'm, you know, like, I get so sick and tired of hearing people, and I'm, and I understand people have their, their, you know, their opinions. It's rather sickening hearing people talking about another country that's thousands and thousands of miles away. I've been over there. Half these people that get up here and talk, the guy that just came up here, I guarantee you, if he goes over to the Middle East, which I spent a lot of time, he wouldn't last too long. It's nice that they are so passionate, that they get up here since October and they've been sitting here crying about Palestine. How about the people of Spokane? We got people dying of fentanyl overdoses. We got homeless people on the streets. Go back behind the library. I guarantee you, that guy that was up here talking about Palestine would not dare to walk behind the library right now. But he gets up here and cries about Palestine. I do not care about Palestine. I, it's sad that they're at war, but we need to focus on our own city, on our own country. I want to make Spokane great again, not what it's become, where we have drug addicts, homeless, and it's, and, and honestly, it's only going to get worse. Look what's happening to Chicago and to New York with the immigrants, okay? I don't want to disrespect the councilwoman. But these people are here illegally, and it's only a matter of time before they end up in Spokane and we have a situation like what happened in Seattle with the city council in Seattle.
Thank you, Will.
Do some research on that.
Justin?
Hi, my name's Justin, District One. I echo a lot of things that Will just said. I, I don't understand why I, I support the current thing. People take up most of the city council meetings and, with, with things that have nothing to do with city council. I try and focus on things that city council may or may not be able to change if they lean towards the direction of saneness and logic and, and being good stewards of our money. I've mentioned several times, and been shut down several times, about the $200 million that STA wants to spend to close down one lane of division for buses. And I think it's deplorable that four people on city council lean towards one side and have a specific leaning towards, and they're hell-bent on, on wasting our money on useless things that don't work, whereas two people who are my district representatives don't even have a shot of representing my, my district and what my district wants. And apparently, District One has the highest ridership and the least representation. And I, I think it's an Ashonda, for lack of a better phrase, that you're going to waste $200 million on this project when there's far bigger fish to fry, when we have $50 million over budget. We maybe shouldn't be wasting 50, 50, uh, $200 million on projects that don't work when you already see that they made cutouts on division for the single buses, and then they decided to repave those cutouts only to have the, the double buses put in. So obviously, STA has a history of wasting our money, and maybe we shouldn't have zero pay for, for riders, just a subsidized rider or no subsidized rider when, when STA is already subsidized heavily by Spokane. And we're, we're wasting the money that Spokane, as taxpayers, are giving city council.
Thank you, Justin. That concludes public testimony. I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Is it second?
Second.
So it's moved to second to adjourn legislative session. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any knows? Abstention. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.